The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special board meeting public hearing. We'll start with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Good evening. McCoy?
Here.
Well? Here. Brandon Hoover?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Clayton Warren?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Tucker?
Here.
All right. Thank you, Beth. All seven board members are present. We have one agenda item tonight. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to give the public an opportunity to provide feedback regarding our special board meeting tomorrow, in which we will discuss our masking policy for the beginning of the 2021-2022 school year. We had a total of thirty-three people who registered to speak. One person reached out and withdrew that request, and so we have thirty-two calls to make tonight. The way this will work is Josh will go through the list in the order in which people register. Those of you who are waiting for a call tonight, you will get a call from an out-of-state number that is due to the Zoom platform that we are using. So when you see that number come through, you'll answer it. Josh will let you into the meeting. We'll try to bring people in as we are wrapping up the previous call so that we can keep moving, try to limit the amount of dead time. We do have a firm three-minute time limit for speakers tonight, so I will have the timer going. There will be a tone. I'll try to give people an opportunity to wrap up, but we're going to try to stick to that three-minute time limit tonight, just so that we can be equitable for the number of people who are waiting to speak. With that said, the other thing I should just point out is that by state statute, the board is not able to respond to comments or respond to anyone's any call that anyone makes tonight. So strictly to gather feedback and allow people to call in and make their voice heard on this important issue. All right. So with that being said, Sean Conway is the first person registered to speak. Oh, that's my timer. I apologize.
Hello?
Hi, Sean. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great. Thank you so much for calling in. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have three minutes for your comments.
Oh, yeah. My name is Sean, and I'm at six-fourteen Mather Street, Green Bay, and thank you again for listening to our feedback that we have to offer. I like to keep the masks optional for our kids. I don't want to see it made mandatory. I think that's the best way to go for our kids, and you know, there's people that don't wear a mask, they don't have to. I know personally for our kids, we have one child that has a heart condition, so for her, you know, we want her to wear a mask, but then again, we don't want to have to push out other parents. We want to keep, make sure that's optional for everybody. So that's kind of my stance on this, so we don't see schools closed down again due to lockdown. Thank you for hearing me out about this.
Thank you very much, Josh. Appreciate you calling in.
Hello?
Hi, Gina. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Well, thank you very much for calling in. If you could start by introducing yourself and then giving us your address, and then you have three minutes to speak to the board.
Okay. My name is Gina Wilhelm. Address sixteen forty-six Louise Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin. And I just think that everybody should have their own take on what they should do. Like, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't, you don't, because there's so much science in between both that it works and it doesn't work. You know what I'm saying? But to be unmasked everybody, it's the fricking flu, pretty much, and I just want everybody to have their choice.
Anything else, Gina?
No, I just think it should be a choice.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for calling in and sharing your feedback with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, but like, you know what I'm saying, like, freedom of choice.
Correct. Yeah, so we're not able to have a conversation. You have still two minutes left if you have anything else to say, but we're not able to respond, so definitely hear your comments.
But there's a lot of epidemiologists, the there's a lot of epidemiologists that prove that masks are actually more disgusting. You only mask the sick. You do not mask people that are not sick. So whatever, I mean, I'll leave at that point. It seems to be political now, which it is not, and people tend to put that on there, but don't mask our kids. It messes with their reading, their learning, everything. Just put it as choice, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gina.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Bye-bye. Hi, Mark. Can you hear me?
If you are satisfied with your message, press one. To listen to your message, press two. To erase and re-record, press three. To continue record-
Mark? Oh. He was on hold for a minute there.
Yeah, it looks like we got voicemail there. I'll
Oh, I see. Okay.
I'll call him back in just a moment.
Okay.
We'll move on to Jamie.
So just so people are clear, if we do miss somebody in their, in the order, we will just bump them down a spot. We'll try back a second time. If they don't answer the second time, we'll bump them down to the bottom of the list and make one more attempt afterward through all our calls. One more reminder, in case anyone tuned in a little bit late, that if you're waiting for a call, it will come from an out-of-state number due to the Zoom platform. So if you're expecting a call tonight to speak to the school board, be prepared to answer a number from out of state.
The area code will be six-four-seven. That's our call.
Thank you.
Try and mark again. Okay, no answer there. Going back to Jamie. And no answer on to Nikhil. And no answer. I'm going to move on to Pooja. And no answer. No answer on number seven.
You can just go on to number eight, and we'll go back through the list a second time.
Yes, okay.
Good evening, Angelo. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for taking the time to call in tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have three minutes to make your comment.
Sure. My name's Angelo Colaquipas, eleven-twenty-two Terramere Court in Green Bay. A little bit about myself, I have a PhD in virology. I have been researching viruses for the last two decades, it seems, and I wanted to share my comments about mask mandates. And it turns out, as we've been researching this latest variant, the Delta variant, it is roughly a thousand times more infectious than the original coronavirus. And what we found is that it's not that kids aren't susceptible to disease, it's that they're less likely to develop severe disease, but they're just as likely to spread it amongst everybody else. And so when it comes to mask mandates, mask mandates are the simplest, easiest easiest way to mitigate viral spread. And so when it, when it comes to mask mandates, I appreciate that the school board is hearing out parents, but we have to realize that when it comes to medical opinions and how to mitigate viral spread, I think it's something left best to the experts. I mean, we wouldn't say, hey, let's repair a Lammers bus with somebody's opinion. We don't ask for opinions. Based on that, we go to the expert mechanics to repair buses. We we have to realize that when it comes to the health and safety of our children, we shouldn't leave it up to parental opinion. We should be following the American Society of Pediatrics, who came out just last week and said that everybody K through twelve should be masking up while indoors, especially as the Delta variant takes over the main spread in the United States. Not only that, as we look at the United States, we're lacking behind a lot of other industrialized nations with vaccinations. And so outside of developing really nice herd immunity for coronavirus, we're going to have to start looking back at other mitigation efforts. And so with that, of course, masking, again, is the simplest thing, doing physical distancing, really, really simple thing, as we've seen. Children, for the most part, have a pretty easy time masking up. As adults that have the biggest problem, children, on the other hand, seem to be more used to it. And with masking, of course, it seems more that people who have a problem with it do so on a political basis. When we look at the limitations of masking, we've seen that there's not really any health concerns to be really worried about. If you think about in the medical industry, surgeons, things like that, have been wearing masks for the longest time, and none of them have been dropping dead. They don't get any sicker. And when we look at other respiratory viruses during this whole coronavirus pandemic, it seems that our masking efforts throughout our society have really mitigated the spread of other viruses too, like flu, influenza, RSD, things like that.
Angelo, I hate to interrupt you, but you're at your three minutes, if you want to just wrap up your comments.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to say that I'm, as a doctor, I'm in very much support of mask mandates for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Angelo.
Bye.
Hello?
Hi, Edwin. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much for calling in tonight. We really appreciate it. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, you then have three minutes to make your comments.
Sure. My name is Edwin Fredericks. My address is twenty-one thirty-six Blue Bill Street in Green Bay. And first of all, I'd like to thank the school board for allowing the community to share their voices tonight. So let's take a quick look at our schools in our district. We have two early learning centers with no vaccinated students. Twenty-four elementary schools with no vaccinated students. Five middle schools, which have at least one grade that is almost one hundred percent unvaccinated, and at least seventy-one point two percent of the other two grades not fully vaccinated. And four high schools with at least sixty-one point three percent of all students not fully vaccinated. I'm not a mathematician, but that leaves all students in all elementary schools completely vulnerable to COVID. The vast majority of all students in all middle schools vulnerable to COVID. And the majority of all high school students vulnerable to COVID. So why is the school board not even considering a universal mask mandate for all and only considering portions of the CDC's guidelines, which fail to protect our children? Quickly glancing at the two motions shows that they do not follow CDC guidelines. Basically, they say masks are optional for all, which is downright reckless. There's nothing in these about physical distancing, screening, contact tracing, quarantining, or isolating, which the CDC especially has in their guidelines. This pandemic is not over. We, as a state, are going in a wrong direction at a time when our, at an even more contagious variant of COVID has taken hold of our country. Let's not make schools super-spreader events. The prevailing line that many Americans use when the idea of wearing a mask comes up is that it is a personal choice. However, where's the choice to not get sick? Where's the choice not pass this deadly disease on to family members? Where's the choice to receive a fair and appropriate public education, otherwise known as FAP, which is written in the federal law? Right now, the only choice the school board is giving those who want to stay relatively safe under these current, currently proposed motions is a personal option. This does not follow FAP. It creates a segregated population within the school district. Putting a mask on is not an unreasonable request to keep students, staff, and their family members safe. It was done effectively beginning in March when the school went back to in-person learning. I recommend to the school board rewrite their motions to include proven and effective mitigation strategies that will keep our students safe. In closing, I want to remind the school board that prior to beginning the school year, last school year, a member of the school board said during a school board meeting that even one lost life due to COVID within the school district would be too much, and that is why he voted for the school to go virtual and start the school year. So why throw caution into the wind now? We know at this point the need for in-person learning of all students, but it needs to be done safely with masks, just as American Academy of Pediatrics guidelines suggest, and truly following the CDC's guidelines for schools. That's all I have tonight, so thank you for letting me speak.
Edwin, thank you very much for calling. I appreciate it.
Okay. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, no answer from number ten. Hey, no answer from number ten.
Hi, Terry. Can you hear me?
I can.
All right. If you could, first, thank you so much for calling tonight. We appreciate it. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have three minutes to make your comment.
Great. My name is Terry Kajala, and my address is seven-twenty-four Irvington Street. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts this evening. As the daughter of two parents who were in the military and with two grandfathers who also served, and countless aunts and uncles and other members of my family, I grew up learning a lot about liberty and freedom, respect, and accountability, all values that both my husband and I have tried to instill in our children. So this evening, I want to focus a little bit on liberty. If you look at the definition of liberty, it's the state of being free within society from restrictions imposed by authority on one's way of life, behavior, or political views. Liberty has been designated as a basic right since our country's inception. Freedom of choice is at the very core of personal liberty. Our country was founded on the premises of liberty and freedom. Today, in our country, there are lots of discussions and arguments about what's right, what's wrong, what we should think, what we should say, and even what we should believe. One thing that I feel should never be in question is liberty and freedom. Over centuries, hundreds and thousands of men and women have taken a stand and fought for their freedom, for the freedom of those around them. They fought and stood up so that they would have the power to choose, so their children would have the power to choose, and their grandchildren would have the power to choose, so that I personally and you would have power to choose. Freedom is a right, a personal liberty, and it's guaranteed by our founding fathers and by God. With freedom and choice, of course, comes great responsibility and great personal accountability. We are all personally responsible and accountable for our own actions and decisions. Our freedom is guaranteed until and unless by our own actions we do something to forsake that right. I'm here today to say that I am really not willing to give up my freedom of choice. I'm choosing to exercise my responsibility and be personally accountable for myself and my children. And just some food for thought, I'd like to share a quote. "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it on to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same. Or one day, we will spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it was once like in the United States where men were free. I don't know about you, but I don't want to spend my twilight years reminiscing about the days when I had the freedom to choose. I am asking you to protect our right to freedom of choice. Protect our right as parents to choose whether our children wear masks. I feel that masking should be optional for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year. Thank you."
Thank you very much for calling, Terry. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nothing from twelve, moving on to thirteen. On to fourteen.
Hi, Kaylee. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you so much for calling. If you could- Thank you so much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have three minutes to make your comments.
Okay. Kylie Kirsch, seven seventy-one, Dearberry Lane in Oneida. I first want to thank you all for the actions taken to keep our staff and students safe for holding this listening session today. The Delta variant is a huge looming concern. Local hospitals may not be surging now, but we don't live in a bubble and we don't have high vaccine rates. As someone else mentioned, just over fifty percent of our county is vaccinated. Only thirty-two percent of kids age twelve to fifteen, and forty-one percent of sixteen to seventeen-year-olds are vaccinated. The board voted to allow staff to be vaccine-eligible to open the buildings. I'm pleading with you to allow our youngest students to be vaccine-eligible before allowing masks to be optional. Don't make the youngest among us to be at the mercy of everyone else just because being unmasked feels better. The FDA expects this to happen in early to midwinter. It is vital that we stay ahead of the curve in order to prevent the need for stronger measures. I know some will say we have the choice to remain virtual, but those same voices just spent a year telling everyone why virtual wasn't okay, how it hurt families financially and how it hurt their own kids. They've spent a year saying they just wanted the choice to be back in person, and that's happened. Masking is a necessary and known effective mitigation strategy, and it's the best option we have right now for those who cannot yet be vaccinated. You may hear from people taking Dr. Fauci's words out of context and saying he said masks don't work. He actually said masks are for infected people to prevent them from spreading infection. We don't always know when we're infected, so this is precisely why the unvaccinated need them. The CDC guidance clearly states only vaccinated people are safe to unmask. It does not state anyone vaccine-eligible is safe to unmask. The motion as written does not follow CDC guidance either way. How does this protect ineligible sixth graders? Why is this vote even necessary when you just voted last month to follow CDC guidance? It's clear from a trip out in the community, the honor system doesn't work. One of the roles of government, one of your roles as elected officials, is to protect the health and safety of your citizenry. Your job is to make choices that are in the best interest of the people in spite of the pushback you may receive. Our exercise of rights may not endanger others and in doing so violate their rights or the public welfare. This is why smoking is no longer allowed in most places, even if you're old enough. Do you have a plan for quarantine this fall? Will symptomatic students... Um, hold on. I'm not sure what just happened. Will symptomatic students be sent home? The Delta variant is much more transmissible than what we're dealing with last year. I just want the young kids to have the same chance the older kids and adults have. It's reckless to stop now and toss those kids out to fate when their chance is almost here. Please vote tomorrow for continued masking in schools when there are students who are as yet unable to be vaccinated. Any unmasking is going against the CDC recommendations you collectively agree to uphold. A blanket requirement protects public health as well as the privacy of those who opt against vaccination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kylie. Appreciate it.
And no answer from fifteen moving on to sixteen. Moving on to seventeen.
Just a reminder, if you're waiting for a call tonight, you will be receiving a call from an out-of-state number because of the Zoom platform, so just be prepared to answer a number that you might not recognize. If we do try to call you the first time, we'll bump you to the bottom, and let's make another attempt before we log off.
On to eighteen.
Good evening, Martin. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have three minutes to make your comments.
My name is Martin Weber, and I live at thirty-three oh seven Beach Lane in Green Bay. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm not gonna beg and plead with you guys, uh, you know, regarding the masks. But what I do want to do is just point out some facts that, um, you know, that we've learned over the past eighteen months. And, uh, you know, it's been clear that masking and lockdowns have not worked. I mean, you've seen case surges in areas that have had, uh, very strict mask mandates. Um, same with lockdowns. Um, on the WHO's, the World Health Organization's webpage, last year, uh, they had told, made an advisory to decision-makers. And that advisory stated that the use of masks for healthy people, and I stress, healthy people, in community settings. And they say, "The wide use of masks by healthy people in the community setting is not supported by current evidence and carries uncertainties and critical risks." Their webpage. Um, in two thousand seventeen, the World Health Organization published a document. It was a pandemic management guide. Nowhere in there did it mention lockdowns or masks. That was two thousand seventeen. Um, many schools were open last year that did not have masks or require masks, and there were no issues. Late last year, a study was, uh, published on the supposed efficacy of masking. The study was retracted shortly thereafter because there was a case surges in the areas that they, uh, put together the study on, where masking was, uh, you know, heavily implemented. Dr. Fauci originally said, "No masks, no need for masks, they will not help. In fact, they may cause more infections as they can create a false sense of security." A recent study said that masking of kids leads to dangerous levels of carbon dioxide. On the WHO's website, back, you know, back to the WHO, uh, they give instructions on proper masking. A proper fit. Paper masks are to be thrown away after a single use. Paper masks are to be thrown away once they become moist. Cloth masks should be changed if they become moist. Cloth masks should be washed after each use.
Martin, I hate to interrupt the three-minute service if you just want to wrap up your thoughts.
Okay, I'm just, you know, I'll make it quick. Again, we've learned a lot over the past eighteen months, and it's the vulnerable that need to be protected, not the healthy. Thank you for your, uh, uh, time. Wash after each use.
Martin, I hate to interrupt the three-minute service if you just want to wrap up your thoughts.
Okay, I'm just, you know, I'll make it quick again.
Eric, we have Aaron on the line.
Hi. Hi, this is Aaron.
I think we may have lost Eric here. Yes.
This is Aaron.
Hi, Aaron.
Hi.
We may have lost Eric Van den Hoofel here. He's locked up right now.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, he did. I see that.
So I'll just step in here.
Um, okay.
Aaron, if you, if you've just, uh, thank you for participating tonight. If you'd just please introduce yourself and state your, um, your address, and then you have three minutes.
Mm-hmm. No, the drill. Thank you. My name is Aaron Kruger at two thirty-two Oak Hill Drive. I have two children in the district. So I know the data and evidence that supports both philosophies around masking is well-covered territory, so I wanted to simply share a personal story with you today. Uh, my oldest son will be a sixth grader next year and has had moderate to severe eczema since infancy. To say we tried it all is an understatement and finally achieved long-term progress when we tested his IgG food allergies and overhauled our family's entire dietary and environmental health strategy. So fast forward to March twenty-twenty-one, when we got back to in-person learning, and he was so excited to be with friends and a teacher, he honestly could care less about masking. My son's skin, however, took a frustrating turn for the worse. He once again experienced painful cuts and raw skin around his mouth, nose, chin, on the back of his ears. We sent him to school with lotion. We tried different fabrics, styles of masks, changed masks midday. Of course, washed the mask daily. His skin continued to break down. I even kept him home a couple of days in virtual to give his face kind of a chance to heal, but, uh, which he was less than thrilled about. So here's the, uh, the thing. So the immune system, first line of defense is the skin. It's home to twenty billion T cells, greater than the number of T cells even inside the body, which suggests the skin's immune defense job is very important. It really hit me through this experience how the masking mitigation technique is literally punching holes through my son's first line of immune defense and could be hurting him more than helping him. COVID can still get through a mask, not to mention the other bacteria and viruses that are trapped against those holes and cuts for eight hours a day, five days a week, resulting in other, uh, non-COVID infections. For him, the issue that challenges mask-wearing as a slam dunk solution to optimal health is how it damages his skin and just kind of creates more health issues. Other kids may show physical symptoms such as nausea, lightheadedness, sore throats at the end of the day. For others, it might be anxiety or complete sensory overload, right, that leads to stress. And stress, it bleeds to the immune response. It's not every kid, of course not. And the severity of these issues run the gamut. Kids and their families should have the choice to adapt. Given that we all know the risk of walking out our front door every day, we are responsible to determine the biggest risk in our health and protect ourselves accordingly. To claim masking and vaccinating as the only acceptable way to mitigate risk and the only way to protect your community and yourself is just oversimplified. Like it or not, the mask or the vaccine has not been the silver bullet to eliminating spread. And in some cases, has possibly reduced small risk of serious COVID infection, but increased risk in my kid's health in more certain ways. That matters. It's time to think outside the mask and ask ourselves what's next. Rest assured, there will be continued uneasiness with every variant and virus from this point forward. So in conclusion, there may be good changes to what America's learned about preventing illness that come out of all this, but I do not support mandatory masking as one of those. I hope we take the first steps towards what's next with going mask-optional for all grades for the next school year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Aaron.
Um, I have a, I have a point of order.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, I'm going to read this because I, I used the chat. So just to make sure there isn't a problem, I'm going to read what I said in the chat, just so it's on the, the public record. Um, I said in the chat, I received a text from someone who said they were on the list, and they were hung up on when they pressed one to connect. And then Josh replied to the chat, "Okay, I will remove the press one option." Uh, the first two, we got voicemail. That never used to happen, so I turned on the press one option. So I'm just doing the point of order and reading that to make it known, but also to make sure that everything that was put into the chat was in the public record. And if I get such a message in the future, I will just make a point of order again. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we may have, um, issues like with the first couple that, um, that didn't answer, where if it goes through their voicemail, it'll still pop in here and we'll hear their voicemail. So I'll do my best to disconnect them immediately. Okay, looks like we have Lindsay in the waiting room.
Laura, could you handle the couple, the next couple of calls? I'm having some technology issues.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Lindsay, can you hear us? Hello, Lindsay? Hello?
Hello, hello?
Hello, is this Lindsay?
Yes, it is.
Hi, um, thank you for participating tonight. Um, can you please introduce yourself and, uh, state your address, and then you have three minutes?
Hi, my name is Lindsay LaFever. I live at, um, six one seven Melrose Avenue in Green Bay. Um, I wanted to thank you for allowing us all to share our thoughts with you today. So while neighboring districts are making masking strongly encouraged but optional, we're still enforcing this indoor masking for students under the age of twelve. I'm feeling very much like this is a repeat of last year when parents were asked what our preferences were for schooling, virtual or in-person. Then we were informed right before the school year started that there was no option. All students would be virtual. This is the reason that I had decided to obtain a private school voucher for my daughter who is going into first grade because I no longer trust that you will listen to what us parents have to say in regards to our children's education and health. Because of a change in work situations, I will no longer be able to use this voucher for my daughter, and she will again be in the amazing school she was in last year. But now I am once again nervous to have my daughter in this school district that I no longer trust to allow me to make choices for my child. I am asking you to please allow parents the ability to choose whether or not to have our young children masked or not at school regardless of vaccination status or accessibility. If a parent wants their child to mask, then let them. But if parents make different choices and don't want their children to mask, please let us choose. Thank you for, um, letting me share today.
Thank you, Lindsay. Josh, are we doing number twenty-two now?
Number twenty-one, Erin Hedley. Hedley.
Hello?
She's here.
Hello?
Hello, Erin.
Yes, hi. Thank you.
Um, thank you for participating tonight. If you would, please introduce yourself and state your address, and then you have, um, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. My name is Erin Hedley. I live at seven twenty-five Laverne Drive in Green Bay. I have three children in the district. Again, thank you for this opportunity to speak to the board tonight. I want to share a little bit about my background. I'm a research microbiologist, and my opinions are derived from my professional experience in education tooling over twenty years of being a scientist. The debate we're talking about this evening is about risk. And in order to properly assess risk, it is important to look at all the possible causes of death in youth under the age of eighteen. In the U.S., there are an estimated seventy-six million children under the age of eighteen out of a total population of about three hundred thirty million people. Since the data has been compiled by the CDC starting in March of twenty-twenty, which is about sixteen months, there have been four hundred ninety-four total deaths in children under the age of eighteen from COVID-nineteen. This equates to a simplified probability of death in children in that age group of about one in one hundred fifty-two thousand. In comparison, the estimated probability of death for fully vaccinated individuals in the U.S. is trending to a riskier one in one hundred ten thousand people. So again, this assumes- So again, this assumes that the date, the death rate of fully vaccinated people, which is currently around 1,000 people in six months since vaccinations, uh, took place, that remain, assuming that remains consistent and that the estimated number of 220 million people will be fully vaccinated by the end of the year. So even though the data is revealing that fully vaccinated people are at more risk of death than children under the age of 18, again, the children who are unvaccinated, the CDC has recommended that fully vaccinated people can return to normal and do not need to wear masks. For further comparison, I found an article in the New England Journal of Medicine published in 2018 that cites the top causes of death in children and adolescents from the year 2016. And the following numbers have been rounded just for simplification. So the probability of youth under the 18, or under the age of 18 dying and any injuries is one in 6,000. Car crashes is one in 19,000. Firearm injuries is one in 25,000. Cancer is one in 42,000. Suffocation, one in 55,000. Drowning, one in 79,000. And drug-related, one in 80,000. All of which are significantly higher probability than the risk of death from COVID-19. As a scientist, I assess the risk of foodborne pathogens and the probability of causing disease daily. Life is full of risks and it is up to parents and students to assess their own risks in living their lives. Please give us this choice. And thanks for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Erin.
Laura, I can jump back in. I think I'm good from a tech spot, but be on call in case I need you.
No problem.
Ned, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Great. Thank you so much for calling tonight. We really appreciate it. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address and then you have three minutes to make your comments.
Sure. Ned Dorf, 1321 Emily Street, Green Bay. Uh, thanks for holding this listening session tonight. My name is Ned Dorf. I'm the father and teacher of young Green Bay public school students. And last year, our entire community, including our children, carried a heavy burden. We worked together to ensure virtual learning, hybrid learning, and in-person learning went as smoothly and safely as possible. And there were many bumps in the road. I'm proud to say that overall, my students and my own children navigated those bumps with grace and with a positive mindset. Uh, this year, we're looking at a full-time return to in-person learning. I have been working all summer with students at two of our schools and I'm excited to interact with more of them again in the fall. Um, as I'm not a medical expert, I'm putting my trust in the recommendations of our medical experts. And I believe that with a combination of voluntary vaccinations and required masking in high-risk settings, we can avoid serious illnesses that have caused many students and staff to enter into quarantine over the last year. As proud as I am of how my students did last year, I would prefer to safely keep our kids at school and avoid another long-term virtual learning scenario. I'm asking the board to hold the line on masking in buildings, especially where students are too young to receive the vaccinations. At some point, I look forward to us safely removing, removing our masks indoors, but we have not yet reached that point. I also ask that the board continue to allow students and staff to unmask while outside. Uh, we've been doing that during summer school and it's been highly successful. As our health professionals have tirelessly reminded us, masks primarily help reduce exposure coming from an infected person and secondarily reduce the chance that a healthy person will be infected. I ask that the board take reasonable measures to protect the health of my students and my own children. Giving students a chance to opt out may sound reasonable for some, but it creates a serious risk to those students and those around them. Please wait until young children have had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. I also want to thank the larger community for being engaged in these dialogues. And I ask that as time goes on, you continue to advocate, advocate for all students, including those who are neurodivergent, those experiencing struggles related to disability, health condition, poverty, marginalization, or structural impediments. Lastly, all of us, regardless of ideology or political affiliation, have endured trauma to some extent due to the pandemic. Many students and adults are still filled with anxiety. Please offer support to each other and reach out if you need to. And please support mental health services in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ned. We appreciate your call.
Thanks.
Good evening, Rebecca. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for calling tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address and then you have three minutes to make your comments.
Um, my name is Rebecca Happy and I live on 1338 Princeton Place in Green Bay, Wisconsin. And, uh...
Oh, we lost her.
I'll call her back.
Hey Rebecca, are you there?
To leave a callback...
Uh, it was voicemail. Maybe we'll move on to the...
Yeah, why don't you go to 24, Josh, and then go back to 23? We know she's there.
Jan Getchel.
Is not available. The mailbox is full and cannot accept any messages.
For board members...
Yeah, you want to go back to 23?
Sure.
Okay. Um, for board members who are following along with the registered list, number 25, uh, reached out today and asked, uh, to be taken off the list. So we'll go on to 26 then after this. Hi Rebecca, sorry, we lost you.
No, that's all right. I'm not sure what happened there.
Yep, well, we've got your name and address. So if you want to, uh, start your three minutes, you can go ahead.
Okay, and then this is about, um, the, about masks in school this year, correct?
I mean, you can speak to whatever you want. The, the main purpose is for our vote tomorrow on our masking policy, yes.
Okay, well, um, honestly, I don't, uh, agree with the kids having to wear masks. Masks are not needed anywhere else, nor required anywhere else other than the hospital, which is the only place that makes sense to me because sick people go there. Um, but COVID hasn't even affected children. I mean, that's a well-known fact. Um, so for them to have to be forced to wear is just absolutely ridiculous. I mean, no other official is wearing them anywhere anymore. So I feel like it's just a stupid argument at this point. I mean, other than me not wanting my children to wear masks nor do I feel like they should have to be forced to wear masks, um, I feel like there should just be an opinion, uh, or more of a gut feeling. You know, if you feel like you want to wear it, go ahead. That, that's your choice. I don't really care. But to have it being forced is just, like I said, just unrealistic at this point of where we're at, especially with this whole COVID happened. But other than that, I, I really don't have any other concern at this point.
All right, well, thank you very much for calling in, Rebecca. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You as well. Bye.
Hel- hello?
Hi Kathy, this is Eric Vanden Hoel with the Green Bay School Board. Can you hear me?
Hi Eric, I, I can. I have you on speaker. Can you hear me?
Great. Thank, thank you so much. Well, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address and then you have three minutes to make your comments.
Sure. I, I paused you on, 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 um, the meeting because I'm watching you. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's perfect. And we don't have any feedback. I appreciate that.
Okay, I, I didn't know, so I, okay. Um, my name is Kathy Sahersky and I live on Warm Springs Drive, 54311. Uh, want to thank the board first off for allowing an open forum um, for us to speak, for the public to speak, especially on a Sunday night. Um, in preparing to speak tonight, uh, I had many follow-the-science statistics, medical facts, expert opinions in regards to the benefits of mask-wearing or, or no masks for children and also questions regarding the effectiveness of the, uh, experimental treatment for COVID. Instead of reciting, um, all of that information, attempting to sway others or get others to listen to, you know, my point of view or from a different perspective, I just thought I'd get back to maybe some basics of, uh, simple common sense and common ground. Um, common sense is just sound practical judgment concerning everyday matters, common ground, shareable ground whose boundaries are marked by a range of actions that we can all live with. I think we can all agree that we simply want what is best for our children. Parents simply want to make the power to choose for their child. I feel like the board is continuing to overstep its authority in mandating masks for the younger grades. Instead of the constant division and anger, maskers versus anti-maskers, vaccines versus anti-vaxers, I think all the parents want is a choice to make this decision for their kids, which I strongly feel is a medical decision. I understand the Green Bay School Board has very difficult decisions to make for 20,000 students, but this, I do not feel that the school board has this higher authority to make this decision for our children. I think the parents should ultimately have this choice. I am asking for masking to be optional for all grades for the fall school year. If those want to continue to wear a mask, absolutely, please do so. Um, immune compromise, if they feel they want their child to be taught virtual, please do so. We need the board to find common ground and use common sense. We need to stop making these decisions based on fear, personal views, this expert, that, that expert. We're 18 months smarter than we were last March and let's try to use some common sense. Uh, enough is enough. Let's get back to a common sense approach and reach some common ground. Give us this choice. That is all we are asking. You have the opportunity to allow the parents to decide what is best for their children. Please do the right thing and make masks optional for the upcoming school year for all grades. Um, and as I stated, you know, four or five weeks ago when I spoke down at the, um, office, I have a junior in high school, so this, this doesn't affect me right now. But I feel like these young kids need a voice and these parents that are afraid to speak need a voice. Um, just lastly, I want to thank again all the teachers in the Green Bay schools. I'm almost done. For their tireless work and really overcoming so many obstacles to teach and engage our children during these difficult, uh, circumstances. So again, thank you to the teachers. We appreciate you more than you'll know. And, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Kathy, thank you so much for calling tonight. We appreciate it.
But to have it being forced... Thank you.
Good evening, Sandy. Can you hear me? Sandy, are you there?
To leave a callback number, press one. To send this message now, press pound or hang up. To replay...
Just going to keep moving down the list. Good evening, Beth. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you so much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address. You then have three minutes to make your comments.
Sure, thank you. My name is Beth Lane. My address is 1841 Seventh Street in Green Bay. Um, I just want to say thank you for staying the course and for not pandering to the pressure. I hope you continue to advocate for the health and safety of our students and staff. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about choice. I just want to share that there has been choice this entire time. You had the choice of in-person learning or finding a district that was open for in-person learning. You had the choice to either put a mask on, to enter a store, or to shop somewhere else. You have the choice to get vaccinated or wear a mask when out in public. You have the choice to make decisions that only affect yourself or make the ones that affect everyone around you. Just because you don't like the choices in front of you doesn't mean you didn't get one. How do we protect our 11-year-old middle school students that cannot get a vaccination? How do we protect our special needs students that might not be able to get vaccinated or are actually unable to wear a mask instead of those just whining about having to wear one? The honor system does not work. Society has proven that we cannot be trusted to help keep each other safe. I want my children to be in person this year. I kept them home last year. I took every decision the board made last year and I made it work for my family. And just like everyone else, we struggled. It wasn't easy. I want my kids to be in school, making friends, learning, but most importantly, I want them to be safe. Please continue with the policy that you currently have in pla, in place for masking. It is the best compromise there is. Look at the examples of the larger districts around us. Please continue to follow the CDC guidelines and listen to what the experts are telling you. Thank you for your time and have a good night.
Thank you, Beth.
Bye.
Hello?
Hi Abby, thank you so much for calling.
Hi.
If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, you then have three minutes to make your comments.
Sure. Uh, my name is Abby Vazalka. I live at 832 Neville Avenue in Green Bay. I have two children in the district, one in middle and one in elementary, and I would like to express my support for school-wide masking in schools of kids 11 and under. These students are unable to be vaccinated and we should be continuing with masks at least until they can be. Um, thank you for taking the time to listen to all of us parents. Um, and I hope you guys make the best decision for the entire student population. Thanks.
Thank you for calling, Abby.
Yep. Bye. Have a nice night.
Yep, you too. Going on to number 30, uh, of a total of 33, and then we'll go back through the voicemails.
61168. The Averyes. We can't take your call right now.
Good evening, Denise. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great. Thank you so much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, you then have three minutes to make your comments.
Hi, okay. Um, my name is Denise Seibert. I live at 883 Elmore Street in Green Bay. If there is anything this last year has taught us, it's that Americans are staggeringly selfish. Not just your meat and potatoes, I don't want to share selfish, rather a total apocalyptic, I would let you, I would rather let you die than inconvenience myself kind of selfish. Here we are again. These meetings seem like a broken record. I don't know about all of you, but I'm exhausted. My son with fragile, uh, genetic autism spectrum disorder has been unable to wear a mask since the beginning of the pandemic. He is also not eligible... He is also not eligible for vaccination for a few months and he is not alone. I am here again to ask for the board to consider using masks to protect the students and staff at all levels of learning. I am fully, I'm a fully vaccinated adult and still wear my mask into a public space where I am one of, if not the only one, still wearing a mask. With only 50% of our population vaccinated and around 25% of children 12 and older vaccinated, it is clear that the honor system is defective. We have not been able to work together as a community or even a district and the divide is tremendous. If this is truly about getting kids back into school for their social and emotional development, to get kids out of at-risk situations and provide meals, the decision to mask across the board should be a no-brainer. It is an inconvenience I am personally willing to make as a responsible adult and a parent of a child with special needs and to give all children the opportunity to learn. My child deserves to feel safe and supported in his learning environment. I am exhausted by our community's personal decisions where the world is at their feet for the inability to make a small sacrifice for the greater good of everyone. My son is being punished harshly, paying with his childhood years because we cannot work together. There are unfortunately no other options at the district level for my child as he is going into middle school and there is no online platform for special education that we can apply for through the district. I have no choice but to send him to school or to pull him from the district. To go where? There are no options for us. There are many opportunities for regular educational learning, but I may as well reinvent the wheel when it comes to finding supports for my son that won't force me to double mortgage my home. My child, my child's life is not a sacrifice I'm willing to make. Wearing a mask is easy. Washing your hands is easy. It is our job as parents and teachers to come together to teach our children how to be responsible humans and show kindness and compassion. As a parent of a special needs child who has made very difficult decisions all of my son's life, I do not feel like he nor I should have to be put in this position, especially when services are currently being offered to us for in-person learning. I am asking for the students who cannot ask for themselves, like my son who is non-verbal, and asking for the health and safety of individuals who have not been eligible for vaccination to please consider them in decisions that you make. Thank you for your consideration and continued hard work and dedication to create safe environments for our children.
Thank you for calling Denise. We appreciate it.
Thank you Eric.
Yep, have a good night.
You too.
Hi Shawna, can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you.
Great. Thank you so much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, you then have three minutes to make your comments.
Okay. My name is Shawna Van Roy. I am an RN, a military veteran and a parent. I live at 1409 Wolverine Trail, New Franken, 54229. I want to make the masks optional. As parents, we should be able to make these choices for our children. If people truly believe that the mask protects them, it should be their choices, it should be their choice if they believe it protects them. But for my children, it created other issues like anxiety, headaches, dizziness, nausea, feeling like they can't catch their breath and having difficulty expressing themselves. My son who is in middle school who was sent to the office more than he was in the classroom for not wearing a mask above his nose. My daughter who is in high school has difficulty talking to others without the mask. And with the mask, it makes even harder for her to contact with other people. Kids use expressions on their faces when they connect with each other. It's just human nature. Both of my kids are excited to get back to their after-school activities. You cannot sing or play sports with a mask and not get sick. Last year, my son almost passed out from running in his gym class with the mask on. Wearing masks are not made for healthy people and that's a fact. Asymptomatic people cannot, I repeat, cannot transmit this virus and children have a small percentage of getting this virus. Kids are not wearing the mask properly in school anyway to prevent this virus. So why are we getting forced to wear one? Teachers raise more time correcting the students to pull their masks up on their face than they are teaching. There are so many studies and articles out there written by doctors, scientists and nurses that say masks are ineffective by afraid of coming forward because of being fired or ridiculed. So why are we creating health issues that can be prevented in our children? Please keep and have an open mind and use the other resources in your decision. If you're interested, I can make copies of my research and references and I'm sure other parents will also be able to provide you more information. I take this issue seriously and I look at both sides of the issue. Bottom line is, this issue and other health issues should be choice for the parents to make, not the school board. We need to stop living in fear. Thank you.
Thank you Shawna. We appreciate your calling. Hi Barbara, can you hear me? Oh, voicemail.
Okay, then I'm gonna swing back up to the top. So this will be number three again.
Just a reminder, if you are watching, you registered to speak tonight. We're gonna go back through and try a second time. You should be expecting a call from an out-of-state number using our Zoom platform. Be on the lookout for that. We're going through the second time. If so, if we have some dead time, if we're not able to connect with somebody, might just be sitting here. Josh, appreciate your patience and your support here through this process. Good evening Jamie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, you then have three minutes to make your comments.
Okay, I just feel that it should be up to the parents whether they wear, the children's wear masks or not. That's why you guys still have virtual. If they don't want to go to school, then that's up to the parents to, they've been going all summer without wearing masks and have been fine, so just feel that it should be up to the parents regardless of whether they wear one or not.
Okay. Anything else Jamie?
No, that's all.
Okay. Thank you very much for calling in. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, moving on. That was actually a busy signal.
You on number six Josh?
I am, yes.
Yep, just trying to follow along.
I'll try that one again.
Pooja, can you hear me?
Who is that?
Hi, this is Eric Van den Hoog with the Green Bay School Board.
Eric?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for calling in tonight. If you could introduce yourself and give us your address, you then have three minutes to make your comments.
What is this for?
This is the open, the public forum for the Green Bay Board of Education with regard to our vote on our mask policy. You had registered to receive a call tonight.
Oh, okay.
So if you have any comments or anything you'd like to say to us, you have three minutes after you introduce yourself and give us your address. If you don't have any comments, that's fine too.
Yeah, my name is Pooja Bamba-Aurora. Do I need to spell it?
Nope, we've got it here. If you could just give us your address and then you can go ahead with your comments.
3230 Window Road, Howard, 54313.
All right, go ahead Pooja.
Well, I just wanted to say that I would like to have mask mandate for the kids in this coming year, upcoming year, starting like in fall and spring. Because I think that CDC is recommending that and there are so many variants, especially Delta variant. And American Association of Physicians and Pediatrics have also recommended a mask for kids of their age. So I just want that the school system align with that and be conscious of these variants to just solidify a healthy atmosphere, a healthy learning atmosphere for our children who attend schools in person. Thank you. That'll be all.
Thank you Pooja. We appreciate your call.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Bye.
You're calling along Eric on to number 10. That was a busy signal. On to number 12.
Name and phone number after the beep. We will return your call.
13.
At the tone, please record your message. When you've finished recording, you may hang up.
15.
Hi Jennifer, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for calling tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have three minutes to make your comments to the board.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jennifer Grant. My address is 3425 Yorkshire Road, Green Bay. Am I okay to start then?
Yeah, go ahead Jennifer.
Okay, sorry. When you vote tomorrow, I hope you keep following the following things in mind. There were 11 states that never had a mask mandate in the past 18 months and six more that later joined them in dropping theirs. No major outbreaks. In fact, had the least amount of cases. States that dropped their mandates saw cases continue to fall. Remember a month after our statewide mandate, our numbers skyrocketed and since lifted, continue to fall. Dr. Fauci himself said multiple times, "The masks do not stop the spread of the virus." COVID is a virus and masks have not changed. So what has? Also, there's no test available that tells you what variant you have. So how will we know if the Delta variant really is worse? Besides the experts telling us that masks work based on their opinion, I have not seen a single study that shows that it significantly stops or reduces the spread. We have never used masks with past viruses. Why now? Making you eligible for the vaccine does not guarantee someone will get, will get it, the vaccine, nor does it automatically make you safer just because you are not eligible. For those who have high-risk kids, I ask, what have you done in the past to keep your kids safe from all other illnesses and viruses? Why is my kid's risk less important than yours if they're having harmful side effects from these masks? I hope you think about your own personal life and decisions you have made in the past few months as well as when the lifted, or the, sorry, the statewide mandate was lifted. Have you attended a meeting, church, gone to a store, a restaurant, gathered with family and friends? Let your own kids play in the neighborhood with other kids? Attended a concert or sporting event where masks were optional for all? Then why can't they be optional for schools? I am confidently, I'm sorry, I can confidently say that majority of people want optional masks as I've seen very few wearing them anymore. I hope parents listening think about the same things and you as board members really think about how you yourself have been living when you vote. Parents that attended the last meeting saw a majority of the school board maskless for the first session and then masked when our portion started. How can you at this point wholeheartedly support mandatory masks? The hypocrisy needs to stop. The divide and the arguing needs to stop. Parents should be the ones making these decisions for their children and that is all we are asking for. I know a lot of you are parents. Have you always been the one making decisions for them? We aren't asking for masks to be banned. If you want to send your kids to school in a mask, you can, but it should not be forced anymore. Thank you guys for your time and I appreciate you allowing public comment tonight.
Jennifer, thank you for calling. We appreciate it.
All right, bye.
Have a good night.
You too.
Hi, this is Chris.
Hi Chris, Eric Van den Hoog calling with the Green Bay School Board. Thank you for calling tonight.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have three minutes to make your comments.
All right, very good. Chris Forsland, 2668 Enos Reling, Green Bay, 54304. There's no scientific justification for masking- There's no scientific justification for masking children. On the contrary, there are over eight hundred scientific, peer-reviewed studies that all conclude masks are ineffective, with the exception of the M ninety-five surgical mask properly worn in a sterile environment. Properly conducted scientific studies have also shown that children are at very low risk of COVID and are also not spreaders or super-spreaders. In addition to this, masks can and have actually made children sick because of the bacteria that grows on the masks being inhaled repeatedly during mask usage. For young children, masks can interfere with their speech and language, learning and development. The production of sounds, words, and proper tongue placement are just a few examples that can have long-term effects and impacts. The negative impacts of masks on children's social, emotional, and mental health is still unknown. However, many parents are concerned about these aspects, and their concerns are justified. I know that some teachers have concerns, and their concerns are noted. However, knowing that the majority of staff members are fully vaccinated, coupled with the proven facts that children have a low susceptibility to COVID and are also not spreaders or super-spreaders, these concerns are objectively and scientifically mitigated. Therefore, masking should absolutely be the parent's choice along with any other healthcare-related decision. Thank you.
Chris, thank you for your call tonight. We appreciate it. Hi, Sarah. Can you hear us?
I can.
Thank you so much for calling tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have three minutes to make your comments.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Birkin. I live at eleven-twenty-four Hastings Street. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your common sense safety approach by not straying last school year from the scientific advice from the CDC, even in the face of great adversity. Secondly, I'd like to implore you to rethink these current motions that you will be voting on tomorrow, as these could not only jeopardize the ability of our children to continue with in-person learning, but they could also forever jeopardize the ability of parents to trust the district with the safety and welfare of our children. The published motions as written do not follow the CDC current masking guidelines, nor do they follow the American Academy of Pediatric Guidelines, which both specifically state that masks should be worn indoors by all individuals aged two and older who are not fully vaccinated. I'm not sure why now, when we are seeing a sudden uptick in cases caused by the new Delta variant, which the experts are calling COVID on steroids, sometimes doubling the number of positive cases in a matter of days, that the writers of the published motions would choose to stray from the CDC guidelines so severely. It's extremely distressing to many of us that feel we should have to beg you to follow the CDC and AAP recommendations, as these should be the guaranteed standard that we should never have to worry that you would ever deviate from the medical professionals that have the training and the expertise to make these decisions. I strongly encourage you to vote against these current motions and produce motions which put the safety of our children, common sense, and scientific guidance back at the forefront where it should always have remained. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate your call. Down to twenty-four, Josh?
That is correct.
There's four, four more calls that had voicemail the first time. Hi, Jan. Can you hear us? Jan, can you hear us? Jan, are you there? Hi, Jan. This is Eric Van den Hoofel with the Green Bay School Board.
Want me to try to call her back, Eric?
Yeah, that would be great. Sounded like her phone was in her pocket.
Try one more time. I got a busy signal that time.
Jan Getchel.
Is not available. The mailbox is full and cannot...
Twenty-seven?
Yep.
The number, and I'll be happy to return your call. Thanks for calling, and have a great day.
Okay, number thirty.
Hi, Barbara. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for calling tonight. If you could introduce yourself and give us your address, you then have three minutes to make your comments to the school board.
And wait a minute, is this, I signed up for it. Is this about the CRT?
No, this is, uh, well, I mean, you could, this is about, uh, our, um, tomorrow on masks.
A mask?
Tomorrow, we are voting on our mask policy for the beginning of the school year.
All right, yeah, now I've got it. I'm sorry. I just came in from the grocery store, so I was a little confused.
No, no problem, Barbara.
Yes, I would be happy to do that.
Okay, so if you could give us your first and last name and your address, and then I'll start a three-minute timer, and you can give us your comments.
Okay. My name is Barbara Avery, and I live at six-one-seven Chantilly Rue in Green Bay, Wisconsin.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Well, I have two concerns. Uh, the masking, first of all, uh, I can't stand to wear these masks, and I don't know how on earth we could expect young people like in third and fourth grade or even in high school to spend the whole day in masks. I think it's ridiculous that we would do that to them. I do not think it will contribute to their academic excellence. I think it will be a detraction, and I don't think teachers should have to deal with that. And I should say that I am a retired teacher, so I have, uh, I have definite opinions on that. The other thing is the CRT. Um, I don't think that has any place in our curriculum. If we want to adjust and make sure everybody in the whole world knows that, uh, Washington and Jefferson had slaves, which they freed when they died, that's one thing. But to go back over the history of this country and pick out anything and everything that could be considered racist is ridiculous. It happened. We can't change it. Yes, we can inform people about it, but to, to put it into a situation where we're supposed to suddenly start hating George Washington and, and Thomas Jefferson and some of the other founding fathers because they had slaves? I don't think that's appropriate. Um, I'm a product of the Green Bay Public Schools. I went to West High School and graduated from West High in nineteen sixty-three. I feel I got an excellent education, and they did not emphasize what the founding fathers did in their private, uh, lives. I think we need to illuminate people about the three-fifths situation and things like that, but we do not have to do it at the expense of being proud to be part of this country. So I am totally opposed to CRT, and I'm opposed to masking kids in public schools. Period.
Thank you very much for calling and sharing your comments with us tonight, Barbara. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good night. One more call. All right, that brings us to the end of the list. With that, I would look for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Second.
Motion made by McCoy, seconded by Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, carry seven-zero, and that concludes our meeting. We will see everyone tomorrow at five o'clock. Good night.
Bye.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine-two-zero-four-four-eight-two-zero-two-five or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.